Okay, good morning, and I'll call the order. The March 6, 2023, regular meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. And I also want to say that we're printing off more agendas if you would like them, and we'll lay them right there when they come out with them. So if y'all would like to have an agenda. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that we'll have a moment of silence because our pastor's away on a mission trip. So if everyone will please stand for the pledge.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
I believe I heard God calling right there during that moment's house.
Our first order of business is a public hearing to receive public comment on the Southwestern North Carolina Home Consortium's home ARP allocation plan. We have Southwest Commission Senior Project Manager Caroline LaFrenier.
That's really good.
Is that okay? I was going to say if I butchered that, please correct me.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like you said, my name is Caroline LaFrenier, Senior Project Manager with Southwestern Commission. I work on our home consortium, so I'm just going to click through a couple of slides real quick before we have the public hearing. So in 2020 HUD allocated our home consortium 1.9 million in home ARP funds. And like most home funds, we have to have a plan in place before we can start granting out these funds. So this public hearing is on the allocation plan. The purpose of the plan is to engage stakeholders to better understand the priorities in our communities. So to engage the community, we held interviews, we did a public meeting, and we also did a public survey. So these funds are a separate pot of money from our regular home funds, so they serve a slightly different qualifying populations. So the home ARP funds have to serve individuals that are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence. Other populations where services would prevent their homelessness, sometimes that might be veterans or different populations like that. And the Home Consortium Board of Directors looked at all of the survey input and all of the different interviews, and although new construction of affordable rental housing was the highest need identified in our region, because of the allocation amount of 1.9 million, they have recommended that these funds be used for supportive services rather than new construction just because of that amount. And they also felt like it would best equitably spread the funds across the region to help people maintain and obtain housing. So real quickly, supportive services can be used for a bunch of different financial assistance, but some examples of those are cost of medical care, including mental health and substance abuse, basic education skills, locating and maintaining housing, employment training programs. We can also use it for legal services, to pay for childcare, food assistance, and then your basic financial assistance like rental utilities and deposits to help people get into housing. So the public is invited to comment on our plan and provide feedback to me until March 10th. If you provide comments during this public hearing, I'll take those as well. And then this plan has to be submitted to HUD by March 31st, and then we will start, hopefully, granting out these funds in the fall of this year. And I have some business cards up here if there are any, anyone that would like to send me an email with the comments or anything like that. And that is all that I have for the presentation. Are there any questions from the commissioners first?
Okay, would anyone care? Now, this is the public hearing for this home consortium. Would anyone like to speak to that this morning? Do you know when I'll close that public hearing now?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Caroline for coming out. Okay, next we'll move to our public comment session. And I have several people who have signed up to speak, and if you would, just limit your comments to three minutes. And Amy will keep the time, and she'll let you know when your three minutes are up. If you would, just conclude your comments if you would at that time. Okay, and our first person to sign up to speak is Don Smart. And Don, I know you're speaking for a group, and so you'll be able to have five minutes for your group. Welcome, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to address the Board of Commissioners today on farmland preservation ordinance in the county. As you know, 30 years ago, we got the ordinance started because farmers in Haywood County were concerned about the loss of farmland and needing protection. Wade Francis was president of the County Farm Bureau. Mr. Russell was chairman of the commission, and Jack Horton was the manager, and Chip Keyan was an attorney. They worked with us, and we worked with them, and got the ordinance passed in 1994 to help give the farmers in this county some protection from development encroachment upon the farmland. As you say, in the last 30 years, Haywood County has lost a lot of farmland. We got about 60,000 acres, we did then, and we're down lower now, closer, probably 50,000 acres. The agriculture economy in Haywood County has roughly around $35 million impact, and we got 541 farms. So let's start this ordinance, it's called the Volunteer Ag Districts. And then later on, about seven, five years later, we added the enhanced farmland preservation ordinance. It had a little bit more teeth in it. You had to stay in it for 10 years. Well, this had a good impact on the farmers. It helped get farmers out of the loop having to deal with development pressures. So along that time, we come out with something better that we hope the farmers could get involved in. They developed the Agriculture Development Farmland Protection Trust Fund. And what that did, it gave farmers the ability, if they wanted to, if they'd been in the Volunteer Ag Districts, they could sign their farms up maybe permanently in farmland preservation. What I'm saying, Haywood County is a county of a lot of history, has got a strong rural heritage, and this is just an old rough picture of what farmland looks like in Haywood County. You're dead all passing around. There's been several farms down there that's got in the program, and we've been trying our best to keep this thing going, and we appreciate the support the commissioners give. We're one of the few counties, when I started this, we was about the third county to get in the program, and I helped several other counties get in it. Tommy and I think right now, most of the counties in the state have got some kind of agriculture preservation ordinance, but not too many of them's got into the Agriculture Trust Fund because to do that, you've got to have people that's trained to work and write it up. It's pretty complicated, and we support you commissioners for helping us get one of those people to help write these for people interested. Right now, we've got about 1,000 acres in the program. Right now, we've got 12 farms right now in the process of trying to get in. We've got a lot more people interested in getting in. And so if you don't have these people, to do it, it's hard to get in, but we appreciate we got a chance to get it in, and it's 12, as I said, right now. And we worked with when we set this ordinance up, there's a farmland preservation committee, advisory committee appointed by you, the Board of Commissioners, that report to you when we say deemed necessary, or you want to hear a report, to kind of look over this volunteer act stuff. But we work in cooperation with Haywood County Soil and Water District because they have to have those people to help administer, they're kind of the police force. So what I'm trying to say is that right now, it was going along pretty good, but all of a sudden, we lost the man we had that was doing a great job of doing this ordinance, writing these things up. And these people are concerned that's in it, the 12, that they might not, since he's gone, resigned, they might not get their farms finished on time, they got to be in on time. He did a great job, we'd like to keep him. We'd like to know why he resigned and why we can't keep him, and we sure like to know we got somebody coming to finish this, or you're going to leave a bunch of us in a heck of a fix. If I had more time, I'd explain more, but that's basically what it is. We hope soil and water can work it out, and we can all get along, and we can keep this great program going. And I left with a paper there to read about the importance. A guy from North Buncombe wrote it, and it tells what's going on. We see it here every day. It's critical we save this farmland.
Okay, thank you, Don, and I appreciate you being a champion for this program, and you really get out there and work and inform other farmers of the benefits, and we appreciate that. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Tim Kelly. Welcome, Tim. Good to see you today.
I'm not sure that I can add much to what Don's already said, but I'll try. As I'm a Haywood County farmer, I've lived here all my life. I know many of you up there. I'm blessed to live in western North Carolina in such a beautiful place. There's eight billion people in the world today, and God chose me and allowed me to live here. Our family's been in farming and worked in Haywood County all our lives, with several Our farm's been in farmland preservation for over 20 years now. With all that's going on, there's a lot of people flocking to the mountains to enjoy what we already have here. Haywood County's blessed with so many resources. We have farmland, timber, clean air, and water. We're one of the only counties in North Carolina that's a natural watershed. And if you look at all the devastation going on around the world, one of the things that they're fighting over is water in California and out west. You know, it's not going to take them long to figure out that this is the area they want to be. We need to be able to protect these resources that God's given us. And I think we have an opportunity through this farmland preservation program to do that, and I hope that you'll encourage you to support that, continue to support what Don was talking about, to prevent ice wars that we have, like here on Rest Avenue, as you go where Bilo's used to be, or if you drive down Rackliff Cove and you see the farm that's been developed into a development now. We need farms for food, and once you take a farm, you can never get it back. I've only known Ryan now for a short time, a little less than a year. Everything he's done has been to help me preserve my farm. And everything I've heard about him, I think he's very knowledgeable and very qualified. I've understood he's one of the best in our state to obtain these preservations. So I myself would like to see him stay, to carry on with this in some way, if it's all possible. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thanks for coming out, Tim. Okay, your next person to speak is Tabitha Ross. Yeah. Thanks for coming out, Tabitha, and you brought your little one with you.
So I'm just here, I've approached you guys before about the Greenway, which Ryan was there with us when we had our meeting on Jonathan Creek, when they approached the farmers about the Greenway. I'm just here to, really for my mom and dad. They have a farm, and they would like to be in the farmland preservation. The Rosses work very closely with the soil and water conservation people, constantly, really, because we can't keep stuff out of the water, but anyway, to meet their specs. But they have a farm, they would like to be in the farmland preservation. They are not in a political standpoint with farmland. I just want you guys to be fair, and choosing these farms, I want you guys to choose the best farms. They have a valley with, I think, 30 acres of land that it would be very good to be in farmland preservation, to keep it, to not be developed. I know there's a bunch of development coming through, you know, there's development coming through on the creek that starts March of 2024. You know, we met with DOT, they're taking four feet of our front yard. So I know that you guys want to develop this county somewhat, but I think we also need to keep in mind that it is a farm country. This is a farm land, there's farms everywhere. And if you close them all down and push them all out, then you're not going to have, you're just going to have a bunch of houses and a bunch of development. But that's why we moved here, is because we moved here to have tranquility, not, I moved from a city. I moved, I live on Jonathan Creek because I don't like, I don't want to live in the city. If I wanted to live in the city, I'd have bought a house in Waynesville. But I live on the creek because it is a rural area, and I just would like to see us really hone in on our farmland preservations and really start saving our farm land for what it's there for, to be farmed. So that's the reason I'm here this morning, to speak on the behalf of my mom and dad, and hopefully they'll get it. And Ryan has helped them tremendously. He helped us at the Greenway meeting, and, you know, he has done nothing but be honest and fair. So I would really like for you guys to be honest and fair to him. Thank you.
Thanks, Tabitha. Okay, next person to sign up to speak, I have Ricky and Samantha Ledford. Did you want to speak individually?
Uh, yes, I can.
It doesn't matter. Oh, okay. Come on up, Ricky. She can speak too, if she would like.
Yeah, she will. Okay, good morning, gentlemen, I appreciate.
If you would, just pull that mic down and speak into it, I meant to tell y'all.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You want to speak with me, or you want to speak individually?
If I can.
Yeah, you can speak individually, yeah.
Together.
Yeah, you can speak together, yeah.
I mean, we're together here, so.
We're married, we're one.
Anyway, we're just here to, in support of Don and the other farmers here, and also Ryan. We have a small farm, it was my granddad's farm. I grew up on that farm, and I love it there, and his vision was always for it to be a farm, and so I want it to always be a farm. So we've worked really close with Ryan over the past several months and developed a close relationship. He's really been helpful in this, getting us this farm preservation. We're on the list. We have an appointment.
April the 4th.
April the 4th with the state, they're coming up to interview us, so we're really close, but there's still a lot of things that need to be, everything has to be just right, I mean, to get this, because there's a lot of competition, and, you know, it's just, we feel like Ryan's the best man for the job. He's just, we feel like he's very passionate about it, very, he loves his job, he believes in what he's doing, and so we just, we just want to ask you guys to be supportive of this farm preservation program, it's important. I mean, we want to see our county, I mean, it's, we've got to have a certain amount of development, I understand that, but we've got to have our farms. The ones that's been here forever, you know, we want to keep them. So if you want to say.
I just say I agree with all of that. The other thing I'll add is, one of the things I enjoyed seeing with Ryan, the time that I've got to know him, is I'm 57 years old, and he's the age of my son, and to be able to see somebody in that generation who wants to build relationships and knows that that's important. And I'll just add to what Ricky said, is that he's very passionate about what he does, and he helped us understand what this program was all about. I mean, when somebody comes and sits in your living room and says, "This is a legacy, this is very important, the decision that you are making." And as I look around, I agree, we need development, but we also need our farms. And so I'm just asking y'all guys to really, my prayer is that Ryan will get his job back. We trusted him, we did have somebody to call us, but we don't know him, and he don't know us. And we were very confident in moving forward in this because we had somebody we felt like we could trust. So we're just asking y'all to do what's right, and to do what's right for our county. So I want to thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all for coming in. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Gail Heathman.
Good morning. I'm not a farmer, and I didn't know much about agriculture before I came on the job as the Soil and Water District's Education Coordinator. I was there 20 years. I've been retired four, but I still stay in touch with a lot of people I worked with, people I care about. We were family. So I'm very distressed that Ryan Manning may no longer be there, and I hope that won't be the case. Ryan, if I had to think of five people with the most integrity, who care the most, character, that's Ryan, and I worked with him every day for the past 11 years. When he first came, he held two or three jobs and kept hoping to get on full time, and eventually he did. He cares, and I think you've already heard this, he cares about the farmer, he cares about agriculture. He is so sharp and so intelligent. He knows about farmland preservation. Another person who worked with him said to me, "Ryan is a gift to the district." So I'm just here to support farmland preservation. I grew to love agriculture and farmers and the whole world that I hadn't known when I came to work. So he's just been outstanding, and I want you to know that, if you don't know him, I know a lot of you already do. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Close public comment, and we'll move to constituent concerns, and, let's see, Bill, can you speak? Kind of give us your title and...
Bill Yarborough, I'm chairman of the Haywood Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm retired from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. I worked with these programs for many years, since, actually, since 1980 in one facet or another. I've been involved with the Soil and Water Conservation District since 1980. There's some things that are always interesting to me, and these people are preaching, man, this is the greatest thing in the world, talking about farmland preservation, voluntary ag district, enhanced agricultural districts. What is amazing to me is in 1980, or the early 80s, we had a fellow named Anthony Sanfilippo come to the Soil and Water District. Obviously, that's not an iron-duff name, Tim, or nothing, but he came and talked about this to us one time, and he said, "You know, this is an opportunity. There's people out here that's actually interested in keeping farmland, and there may be some opportunity for them there to be able to purchase this land and keep it and be able to farm." And I was all excited as a young man, and he says, when he left, I asked G.C. Palmer and Pink Francis and some of these people that was with on the district at the time, I said, "What do you think? Farmland preservation, that's great." And one of them said, "Well, that sounds like something communists would say. Where have we come now? We want to fund these programs. That's what's so great about it. We've come tremendously along the ways now." So what has happened now is we have employees because of the county commissioners' understanding, voting for voluntary ag districts, enhance voluntary ag districts as well, putting money into farmland preservation, and actually funding a person to be able to do those jobs. The employees, they're expected to cross-train too. Everybody in there is a team. So there's times that you come about, if you're not cross-trained, you're not able to take on another position, or it's another responsibility, or an ask for something, it becomes an issue, because what happened in, just a couple of years ago, less than a couple of years ago, tropical storm Fred. And who came to the rescue, in a way? It wasn't a rescue, but there were opportunities there. We had people that staffed, like Ryan and Dwayne Van Hook and others, that were able to come to the table and be able to help the county. County asked us for assistance. We went to the feds, we went to the state, we wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was doing there. And several days after that storm, I got the staff together and said, "Now, we're all going to have to do some other things. We've still got our core duties to do, but we still also got to think about our citizens, so we're going to have to do some things. All of you are going to have to step up." Of course, one of those core duties is what we just talked about, is farmland preservation. Yeah, sure is. It always has been. Since the very early 80s, Davis Ferguson was an employee, he started working with easements on some that we actually got some voluntary work on. So Davis Ferguson, as most of you know, family, Carlisle Ferguson was county commissioner, that's his son. So he came to, at that time. Little bit later, Leslie Smather stepped up. He became that farmland preservation person. He developed these plans, he put the work together, he actually built that program from this time that Don was talking about, which is exactly right, '94, when there was some monies from the state that was put together for farmland preservation. So he was able to develop those. Leslie retired. At that time, we had Ryan, Ryan Manning. Ryan Manning stepped up, did a tremendous job, be able to make those things work. He put everything hint to it, and he did a good job. Ryan has resigned. Ryan resigned on his own merit. He was not asked to resign, he was not asked to consider being fired or anything in that sex. He wasn't asked. He resigned. So the Soil and Water District, in conjunction with the county, has hired the original person, the original person that worked on the easements to start with, Davis Ferguson. Davis worked for the state and retired from the state over 30 years. He developed those programs at the state level as well and was assisting with them. He knows that program well. The best thing about it, too, he also knows the state people involved. We've contacted the state, they're going to help us every way possible to make sure that there's nobody that's in this program that's going to get left behind. We already know that, and one of them mentioned that they've been called, hopefully, and I think all of them have been called. This will not, this is our priority, this is Soil and Water Conservation District, this is Bill Yarborough. This is the program that I absolutely believe in, because since 1980, when I heard that gentleman speak, that it was being done in the Midwest and it's a possibility, I still believe that. If there's anybody that has any doubt that we'll continue this program, they shouldn't. Davis Ferguson is going to be here temporary, he's going to do what it takes, the state has already promised to take care of any questions that we have and work with us hand in hand. We'll not lose a single contract, we'll not lose a single opportunity, we'll not be a single dollar left on the table. So from that, that's my public comments. I want to assure these folks that I've stood with these folks on a lot of issues, we talked about dairy waste, everything else. We will not let you down, and I can promise you that. It will be done, and those are my public comments. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them if I possibly can.
Thanks for coming out, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's see, constituent concerns, let's see, Tommy, do you have any? I guess I'll start with you today.
No, ones I haven't been taking care of.
You want to say anything, Jim?
I had a couple related to the issue with soil and water. I also serve on that board, and I will tell you that we... I also serve on that board, and I will tell you that we also farm. We have a small 50-acre farm in Clyde, and I believe that we're all going to want to eat today, tomorrow, and again next week. And it's very important to me that, number one, we maintain our, maintain our farmland and that we also preserve it for the future generations. And I believe in the integrity of Haywood County. I say this over and over and over again. And I, I'll tell you that I've made phone calls myself. We are, we are not going to let this fail. It's too important. It's unfortunate when things happen with personnel and, but we're going to move forward. We're going to move forward in a positive way. And I have said, I said on Thursday and on Friday, as the Soil and Water Board, we, and the Farmland Preservation Department, we need to have the best in customer service than has ever been seen in Haywood County. And that is my guarantee back to y'all, is that, I don't have a lot of free time, I don't know a whole lot about the program, but if I could, if there's something I can personally go do, I certainly am going to do that. Because we're going to take care of you, and we're going to take care of the farmland in Haywood County. You have my word on that.
Carrie, did you have anything to say?
No.
Okay, Brad?
Had some constituent concerns, some related to what was shared here this morning, and I think that's been addressed, and also some others that I had, I got with Mr. Morehead on, we've addressed those.
Okay, and I do, and I think all our board supports farmland preservation. We, I, I think it's really good whenever you have a farm, and what we see is, is, you know, our, our kids move away and they're not interested in farming anymore for whatever reasons, and they sell the farm, it comes to housing development. That's really unfortunate. But if we're, if we're farmers and we do the farmland preservation, then we know that that land is going to be kept exactly the way it was whenever I was doing it. So, and I, and I really love the program in that respect, and I know that, because a lot of times, when you think of a farm, when I think of our farms, I think of my father and my grandfather out there doing whatever they did on those farms. And it's, there's a lot of peace knowing that you can continue that and that future generations can get that enjoyment. And so I'm, I'm very committed to farmland preservation, and I do do some surveys on those, and, and I always enjoy them because they're, I know what it's going for. Sometimes the state's a little bit aggravating with us because they, sometimes the Ts you got to cross and the Is you got to dot, it's kind of like, seems like overkill, but they're just making sure, and I know, I keep going back to this, they're just making sure that we get it right and that that's going to be kept in farmland preservation. So we, I want, I want this program to succeed, and if you, if y'all see, or any of your friends see issues with it, please let us know. I'm sure you will. But please let us know because we want to continue it. And Dennis, you, Dennis Francis, you've got, you've donated several of those in your son, and we appreciate that. And this is, these are beautiful farms and beautiful land, and I know it's going to stay like that. So that, that gives me a lot of hope. And Don just did one on 209, so when you go out 209, it's still going to be pastureland forever. So that's good, and you're, you're close to town, so. But anyway, we're committed to farmland preservation. We want to, we want to make sure it succeeds. So please let us know if you, if you don't think it is. And I know Bill, he, he, Bill Yarborough is very committed to the program, and I think it runs in his blood, if you will, so like it does all of ours. So I appreciate Bill coming out and explaining. Okay, so we'll move on to agency administr, administrative agency reports and presentations. The first one was going to be the CEO from the hospital, but he can't be here this morning. So we're going to move on next to the presentation of the mid-year Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Report and Program Updates. We have our TDA Executive Director Lynn Collins here this morning to speak to that. Welcome, Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the time to come and give you a mid-year report on tourism in This way. So I'll get started off with the 3% collections. As you can see from this chart, we're 7% ahead of last year. Every month so far, except for one, has been well over last year's numbers, which is a good thing. We are currently 25% ahead of our projections, and we're 7% ahead of the previous year. In the last two and a half years, we've only had three months that were not record-setting months. This is, we've been very blessed in that Haywood County is a location where people want to come and visit and enjoy the great outdoors. So next, we have the 1% collections, and as you can see, this is broken down by zip codes, and all of our zip codes are well ahead of where they should be for the year. They have already collected 69% of their projected revenue for the year. And that money is administered through the TDA through a grant program, and I'll show you more information on that as we move forward. But as you can see, we're glad to see certainly Lake Geneska coming back. They were hit hardest of the zip codes during the pandemic, primarily because they relied so heavily on group business, and during that process, they changed their business model and have been very successful with that. So we're glad to see their numbers coming back as well. This is a historical report on the 4% collection since we went to the 4%. Just to give you an idea of how things are going, the highlighted numbers there are the months at the beginning of the pandemic. And as you can see, we are in for, if nothing happens catastrophic, we are in for another record-setting year. We should, we were just under that $3 million mark last year, and we should hit that $3 million mark this year. Moving forward, the next slide shows you the occupancy tax breakdown by category. And as you can see from this, the vacation rental properties maintain the biggest lead on this. This includes second homes, it includes cabins, cottages, villas, includes all types of different accommodations that are considered vacation rentals. And then you have the hotel motel in the blue section. You have the purple, which is bed and breakfast ends in lodges. You have country clubs and resorts, and then you have campgrounds. The country clubs and resorts, we have a few of those that are under renovation right now, so they will be coming back strong and opening up this year. Campgrounds don't show up very much. Campgrounds are not obligated to collect the occupancy tax unless they have some of the little park models or some of the little cabins on site that have restroom facilities in them. As I mentioned, the 1% is administered through a grant program. So here you have the breakdown of the 1% for each of the zip code areas for the year. So these are the things that are being funded through the 1% money for the zip code areas. It's a very wide range of different projects. There are some additional marketing through the Maggie Valley, Waynesville, and Canton zip code marketing. We use a portion of their proceeds to go towards destination marketing for each of those particular zip codes. And that's in addition to the county marketing that we do. And this allows us to take that money and leverage it against the 3% money for marketing, and it makes our money go a lot further because we're, have better buying power, and we're also able to do some things that perhaps we wouldn't have been able to do without putting those two pots of money together. You also see on there some 3% grants that have been awarded for the year. And then also, I would remind you that at the end of June last year, we set aside $500,000 for a one-time project fund grant program, and we awarded all of that $500,000 on those projects. They have until June 2024 to spend that funding. So those are in the works as we speak. Next, I brought some examples of our marketing campaign for the county. As you remember, pre-COVID, we had a campaign called Hey Now, and that was extremely popular. Then, when we got into COVID, we immediately stopped advertising, and as COVID progressed and we started seeing people come back, our agency developed a campaign called Embrace Unusual. And that just kind of talked, kept our, our destination front of mind for people, and that was a very successful campaign for us. And as we started coming out of COVID, we decided that since Hey Now had been so successful that we would do a Hey Now 2.0 and kind of step that up a little bit. So now, our tagline is, hey, would you like to? So all of our ads and everything start with, hey, would you like to? So here are some examples of those things. And it has been tremendously successful as well, and we are in the process of submitting that to see if we can win some awards this year for that campaign. We have started a Hey Now podcast that's done once a month, and we have had all kinds of different local folks on that, and it's been very popular. And then on the bottom, on the right-hand side, you will see a two-page spread ad that is in the new Our State Magazine. It's in the March Our State Magazine. So this is what I was talking about in combining the marketing dollars. Haywood County has the left-side page, and then Maggie and Waynesville split the cost of the right-side page. So I have talked some in the past about the strategic destination plan. This has been in the works now for about 14 months. It's been a combination of Magellan Strategy Group, Crawford Agency, Streetsense, out of Washington, DC. And they have been working on a long-term plan for us for moving forward that was supposed to have been delivered in January, but it kept rolling over. So now, it's even changed since this page was printed. The plan will be presented at the March 29th TDA Board Meeting. So I'll certainly invite any and all of you to come and see what our plan for the future holds. We're excited about this and looking forward to what they have to present for us. And with regard to our board, we have a lot of new board members now. It's about a 50-50 split of new board members versus old board members, and so it's good that these new people are getting on board and learning about tourism in Haywood County and will be a part of moving the strategic destination plan forward. I would leave you with pillars of a vibrant destination. I think I have shared this with you before, but it's always good to know, to see how that works. And this is what our destination plan is based on. So, that being said, I do have one other thing to share with you, two things actually. This year is the 40th anniversary for the TDA. The legislation was initially passed in 1983. Haywood County went with Bugham County and Mecklenburg County, and the first three counties in the state to have the tourism tax, which is kind of mind-blowing when you think about Haywood County being one of the first. I was around at that time, working in tourism in Haywood County. It's been interesting to see the progression over the years, and I think it will continue to progress as well. I did bring copies of the new... Those just came out. We've gone to a larger format this year. So far, we have received rave reviews on it. Every, you know, we deliver them and people call us back and tell us how great they are and how excited they are to see it. So we hope you will enjoy it as well. You can always stop by the visitor center and get those to have. If you have vacation rentals, or if you have a property, hotel motel, or even if you don't, you need to make sure you have one at home for when you have friends and relatives come to visit. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has them.
Anybody have any questions for Lynn?
Just a comment, just opened the front page and I saw a nice panorama view of a nice-looking farm down on Riverside, I recognize. And I know those folks have already left, but people come here because of the scenic beauty. And our farming community has drawn people here and pretty well diverted previously to Commissioner Best because I know she sits on the Soil and Water Board. But I know those folks are gone, but we, we do support, fully support that group and farmland preservation because it's a hand-in-glove situation. You know, you have to preserve farmers, their way of life, their livelihood, but it also pays back dividends with folks that come here. You know, they come from Florida, they come from Ohio, they come from all over because of what Haywood County has to offer. And, and that group, farmers, farmland, farmland preservation is key for that. And so it is a unique situation to where we have to have a balance of all these things to, to continue. So I must ask, in closing, you said you started in tourism, and we won't go there how far you said.
Yeah.
You said, I didn't say it.
I know, I know.
Are you close to an exit? Should we, are you going to appear before us again, or should we say farewell, or?
I may show up again, who knows? No, actually, I am retiring next month, but that's not to say I won't be back before then to see you. And just as a note, since you brought it up about the farms, the farms are very important to tourism. You know, we, we send folks out to, to visit some of our farms, and a couple of years ago, you might remember that the cover of the visitor guide was the Sunflower Farm at Ten Acre Garden.
Called agricultural tourism.
Yeah.
Ag tourism, it's big, it's getting bigger.
Absolutely. And so it is big, and it's a, it's a very important part of tourism in Haywood County, so.
So Lynn, how long have you worked for the TDA, Haywood TDA?
I'm in my 15th year.
15th year, okay. And then, so you were doing that, you were into doing tourism even before that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. Well, we appreciate your service to the TDA. I know it's been very successful, and it's really evolved, you know, with these, written your homes out. I mean, who would have ever thought that? I mean, I remember we were trying to get people into the hotels, and that was really the only revenue we had. And now that's really dwarfed compared to the others, so. And I know during the pandemic, you were actually having to do the reverse and tell people not to come, you know, for a couple of months, when we were all trying to sort that out. But thank goodness we got past that and, and really recovered really well. And Haywood County has really shown through that, I think.
We were very fortunate through the pandemic, actually, because I know a lot of my peers in, in the destinations that they had didn't have that same success that we did through the pandemic, so.
Wow, yeah. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a few comments. Lynn, we appreciate your service and the commitment, and always a very detailed report. When you think it can't get no better, it seems like it is, and that's a good thing. So again, we appreciate you, what you've done for our TDA, and you will be missed.
Thank you. There's lots of good things to come. It's going to be exciting moving forward, so.
It seems like 1983 wasn't that long ago. It really wasn't.
Yeah, I know.
Golly.
Thank you.
Forty, you say 40 years, that's a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, the next item is the Center Pigeon Fire District Discussion with their Center Pigeon Fire Chief Johnny Pless. Welcome, Johnny. Appreciate you coming out today.
I'm here to talk to you about a couple of areas of our response area that have never been in a tax district. There are small areas. We've historically provided protection to those people since the fire department was organized in 1956. They include the upper ends of Dix Creek and Smoky Cove on the south end, and the Pigeon Gap Road area of Waynesville Mountain on the Bethel side of the mountain. Not a lot of big areas. They've never been taxed because in previously, we could not provide... They've never been taxed, because in previously, we could not provide an insurance rate reduction because of the mileage from the fire station. In 2008, there was a rule change made with the insurance services that we could do a five-to-six-mile extended district and give those people in that extended district a Class 9. Could never be dropped below Class 9. So we did that in 2008, and a majority of those properties now have a Class 9. There are still a few that are in a Class 10, that are beyond that six mile, that are, Class 10 is considered they have no fire department, even though we agree to go, as far as their insurance is concerned. So because of the recession in 2008, we didn't pursue adding those people into the tax. Would have been a hard sale at that point. Because of rule changes that come about recently, with some minor modifications to our existing mutual aid response, we can provide those people with an ISO Class 5 now, which is what the rest of our district, within five miles of our fire station, enjoys. So with that, we're asking that you consider creating a mechanism for those people to help pay for the, pay for insurance, pay for the fire protection that the rest of the fire district pays for. It involves 156 parcels that are owned by 105 people. So like I said earlier, it's a small area. Total property value is $16,147,567. We responded to roughly 36 calls of service in those areas in 2022. We, it's not a place that we never go to. We go quite frequently to those areas. Total fire tax at our current eight-and-a-half cents per $100 valuation would be $13,725.44. Just a reference for that, the cost for us to, the protective clothing for one firefighter is $5,265. NFPA standards limits the life of that to 10 years. So at the latest, we've got to replace that every 10 years. Some of them don't make it that long, depends on the amount of use they get. Some of them have to be replaced in the six, seven, eight-year range. So the protective breathing apparatus that we wire to go into the smoky environments costs $10,000 plus. A new fire engine is over $500,000 today. So this amount of money is not going to really be a surplus on our budget. It's just going to help, help fund the department for the services that they're already getting. As far as for the ISO rating of a 5, I had got one of our local agents to give me just the generic numbers. It changes depending on your home, how it's built, and all those things. But an ISO Class 10 for a $200,000 home with, built in 2000, with a $1,000 deductible, their insurance is $1,253 a year. To drop to a Class 9, which some of those have already got, would be $1,020 a year. To drop to a Class 5, which is what we're proposing, would be $755 a year. So a Class 10 to 9 would be $233 reduction on that $200,000 property, or a 19% savings. A Class 10 to a 5, those people would see, a $200,000 home would see a $498 reduction in their insurance cost in a year, every year, which is 40%. Those that are already a 9 and a Class 5, to a Class 5 would see an additional $265 over what they've already got, which was 26%. So on that $200,000 home, at eight-and-a-half cent tax rate for fire tax, they would pay $170 annually for their fire tax. So with their Class 10 to Class 9 reduction, they've more than made up their fire tax. So anything below that Class 9, they're making money off of their fire tax. The, another example, this is a real example. I had an insurance company call me a few weeks back, just to verify that it was correct, making sure there hadn't been any changes. There was a property that was mistakenly classified in that Class 9 Extended District. It was true, it was actually in the Class 5 district, and it was a mistake by the insurance company. Happens frequently. So it was caught during the policy rewrite that most of you've probably been through with your insurance companies. They do it every so often. That person, they corrected to an ISO Class 5. That property received a $460 reduction in their insurance cost. Whether they refunded them for the past, I don't know. But at that, the insured value of that property, they paid $306.85 in fire tax. So with the, they probably received enough from the Class 10 to 9 reduction to cover that, and that $460 is just extra money in their pocket. They are already in the fire tax district. So some of the, if you choose to do this, the timeline that we'd be looking at, I've talked to the North Carolina Ratings Inspector for our area, and because we are already the responding agency on their maps to that area. It's basically, we basically had to submit a little bit of paperwork to them. We had to modify our response. We had to send them a map, adjusted map, GIS map. And once that paperwork's submitted, and they submit it to the National ISO Organization, it's 90 to 180 days, they'll get the insurance rate reduction. Most of the time, whenever we've changed ours, it's generally within 90 days that they start seeing that reduction. If there was a fire tax added by June 30 of this year, then it would be seen on the September bills. If it's after June 30, it would be 2024 bills before they, those people would ever, would see a fire tax on their insurance. They're, so either, either way we go, if we do it, the insurance, they would see the insurance rate reduction at least when they get the tax bill, or possibly a year ahead before. We're recommending that you create a service district for those two areas for taxes, and we can just change the, and we just change the insurance maps. The insurance map doesn't take action of the commissioners. It does, the tax district does.
So to be clear, to be clear, Johnny, you're already providing fire service to these areas you have for years?
We have. We've already, we've been providing, since I've been there in 83, and as far as I know, from the beginning.
They call 911, you go.
Call 911, we go.
So you're a, you're a Class 5 fire department? And that's what the insurance ratings go off of? Your capability to move water and get there in a certain amount of time enables you to be a Class 5, which is going to give these folks a, looks like a substantial amount of revenue back in their pocket if they have homeowner's insurance, that, so.
It will.
So you've looked at this, and this is, you know, folks have a home in those areas, or some folks are going to pocket $400. And naturally, if they have a home valued more than $200,000, it'll just go up from there.
It will, and honestly, the ones that don't carry insurance, it's going to be a tax. The ones that do, and the majority, majority of them, and us have mortgages, so we're required to have them, but the ones that have paid their mortgage off and don't have insurance, yes, it'll be a tax. The rest of them should make money off of that tax.
A lot of people carry homeowner's insurance even without a mortgage.
We do. We don't see a lot of people that do not have insurance, no matter the situation anymore. They, so.
Have these, any of these residents reached out to you over the years and said, you know, why are we in a, a lot of people know I'm a retired insurance agent. We used to call it no man's land when you were in Protection Class 10, because the rates were significantly higher.
And I have, I did have one person not long ago approach me at church, because he got a letter from his insurance saying they're canceling because he's in a Class 10. And he was able to get insurance from another agency, but it was significantly higher.
What, you said there were some changes that allowed the ISO rating of a 5. Can you expand on that?
The change is if we have an automatic aid department respond, that has a fire engine stationed within five miles of that area. Then, they just sign an agreement that says they will respond an engine with us, and one of them already is. It's just a matter of having the paperwork signed to that area. Then they get our rating.
So is that Waynesville to Waynesville Mountain and Crusoe to Dix Creek?
Yes.
They're in agreement with?
I have talked to both, both of their, the chief officer in both of those agencies, and they're, they've not said anything negative about doing that.
They're willing to sign the mutual aid agreement for these two locations, which would allow you that ISO rating of a 5?
Right, and it'll be something I'll go to, go to their Board of Directors. And that town, it'd be the Town Council and then the Board of Directors for the Crusoe Fire Department. I would go to both of those, with the agreement and maps that would show the area. Again, both of them are small areas. It's not a, not going to be a lot of responses. 36 calls last year, and a bulk of that was two addresses. And it would only be for structured fires. It wouldn't be for every call. Of those 36 calls, there was zero structured fires last year in those areas. But, so it wouldn't be a huge undertaking for either department.
So for instance, they would only respond as mutual aid for a residential structure fire, but if it was a tree down, you would go?
We would go.
Your department would go?
We would go. Tree down, medical calls, which is 70% of our calls, we would be, we'd be going along. It's, they would only be responding an engine to that area in the event of a dispatch structure fire.
What is your actual response time from the department to the Waynesville Mountain and the department to Dix Creek?
About seven minutes. We have paid staff 24 hours a day, and so it's, it's around, just road travel time mainly to get there.
There is no more relieving sound to need assistance and hear those sirens in the distance. I know that somebody's coming to help.
We did have a structured fire at the very end of the pavement on Dix Creek, which is, and we were able to get there and stop the fire, and one of the local churches fixed the house for them. So it was, we did, that house was saved and repaired, so.
Just for everybody's information here, what steps do you have to take as a fire department to attain a 5? I understand it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of training. Could you expand on that just briefly?
There's getting the responding for us with no municipal water systems. We have 30, roughly 36 fire hydrants in our district, and every one of them is around a town camp. So the majority of our district has no fire hydrants. So we have to have the automatic aid responding with tankers, along with our trucks responding with water. Plus, we have to have certified, and they're certified usually by the soil and water people of the county, accredited water points scattered throughout the district to where we can get water. And the personnel, the fire department equipment, all that goes into it. Takes several years to get everything in line to lower the insurance rate.
Well, I'd say with all the residents in your department's district, if you run the numbers, you know, comparable to the ones you presented, it would probably be phenomenal how much money you have saved the residents in your fire district by putting in the time and effort and lowering those folks' homeowner's policy, so. Probably be shocking.
It, I would, I wish I could get, figure, have a way to really figure that, because we have the property tax records. We don't have the information about how much people saved on their insurance. We know a percentage, but we don't know who's insured, how much they're insured for, and things like that. So that, that's the part of the equation that we can't figure. We don't have a way of knowing, so.
It's very interesting, really giving you all of the department's kudos, because sometimes in-town locations will be a Class 4, correct? And you're very rural, these Center Pigeon and North Canton and some of the Fines Creek. I don't think, I think they're a 9, but it's amazing what you're able to do in such a rural area to be able to keep those classes low.
At one time, it was nearly impossible for rural areas like us, without a municipal water system, to lower the rating. But the North Carolina Officer State Fire Marshal, once they took over those lower ratings, and they've been, they've helped us greatly. And so, and with rule changes too, with the National ISO Organization, it's helped greatly that we've been, we've been able to prove that we can give those people better coverage without a fire hydrant.
Johnny, it's sort of a win-win, because everybody's going to be, still be getting the same service, but now they're going to be able to get a little money back and savings on their insurance and stuff. But it's going to help y'all a little bit, it's going to give y'all a little bit of funding back to, for the service you're doing. It's about a win-win all the way around, isn't it?
It will be. It's not going to mean a lot on our budget, but it will help purchase some equipment, pay insurance, different things like that, that we're funding up, that myself, Commissioner Long, and all the other 3,000-plus residents or homes in our district are paying for, so.
Well, I just want to, now, so how, how far is your fire station from these districts?
The furthest one is Dix Creek. Five miles, which has the Class 5 now, ends right above Smoky Cove, in the curve there before you get to the bridge, that second bridge on Dix, the second Dix Creek Bridge, not the river bridge. But, and then there's another mile that's in the Class 9 already that ends at the Lice Bridge up there, just past the Lice Bridge. So there's probably another half a mile above that.
So they'll have to be a Class 9?
There are Class 10 now, but if we do this, they'll get the same Class 5 because.
They will?
Yeah.
Because you have those, those, that aid agreement?
Yeah.
So you worked that out?
We, when I sat down, myself and Fire Marshal, Master, sat down with the state insurance inspector. He had it on his GIS map, and he'd done a broke mile calculation from Crusoe's fire station up, and all those people would be within five miles. So they would all get the same Class 5. And there's one little property at the very back of Pigeon Gap and that sharp curve at the top of the mountain that is a tenth of a mile over, five, six miles.
500 feet.
No matter which end of the road you come in from.
Okay. Are you thinking about maybe building a satellite station or something?
Possibly in the future.
Yeah, okay.
We were told when we first lowered our rating in 2007, 2007, that, that we needed one there in Bethel. They plotted it around the, around the Old River Road, Snowm Road intersection right there, Commissioner Long's house.
Maybe you'll donate some.
And then another one in Dutch Cove around the Morning Star Church there. So we've, we've looked at it, cost versus benefit so far, and... And the availability of land has been the biggest, the biggest thing. In the Bethel area being a watershed for the town of Canton, we're restricted on the size of the lot, uh, and how much we can develop. That's been a, been an issue. Uh, I found out there's some loopholes around that some. Uh, but, uh, and then the Dutch Cove area, we've looked at several pieces of property, but none of them's been exact, has been suitable.
Okay.
Either too high of a, uh, the cost to get it prepar- to prepare the land or. Or, uh, or not in the right areas.
So on the flip side of that, so what is Ri- Lake Logan's rating? Just, what are they, a nine?
I think so. You'd have to ask Andrew that.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say, I'm, I mean, I think it takes hard work to get to a five. And, and I, I just want to say I appreciate your hard work as well as your fire department. Because I know it's a lot of hard work to do that. It's, you go above and beyond, but you save people so much. And you basically have set the standard for, I think, for fire departments in the county. And I, and I, you know, this commissioner really, and I know we all appreciate it, that your hard work.
Thank you. But, uh, the, that rating is not a one-shot thing. It, once you get it, you gotta keep it.
Right.
There's a lot of paper, a lot of work goes in to keep it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You, you can't just get it and stop. You've got to, it go, it, it's a continual thing, so.
Well, I, I hope the residents, I, I think they probably understand that with their insurance bills and stuff, but it's, uh, I, I know that that was, that it is, is hard work and you're really providing a great service for your community by staying on top of it. We thank you for it.
Johnny, on this proposal, do you think it, I think it might be appropriate if we had some announced community meetings? Maybe at your fire department or here to let some of these residents maybe be informed on what we heard today? If they haven't already, or maybe voice some concerns, or I'm sure there'll be a lot of them happy to hear this news. But I think it'd be appropriate if we, we did that.
I do too, and I think it'd be, if they would, uh, contact their insurance agent and just get a, get a cost estimate of what, how it's going to affect them. Uh, I think, I think they'll be a lot more receptive to it once they realize.
We set up a date. Maybe the county manager could facilitate that with, uh, with this and maybe, maybe at your fire department? Or what do you think, Mr. Morehead?
We'll be having a budget annual meeting, probably first week of April. And I would, I'd want to push it out past that. I'd, but, uh.
Can y'all get together and decide on how to set a date and communicate that with the affected folks?
Certainly. We, we'll set that up and then if, if a majority of the board or all of you want to attend, we, we'll notice that, uh, when we get it confirmed. I'll, I'll work with Chief Pless, uh, this week to get something set up.
Be good. Thank you.
Chief, I do have one question. You, you touched on keeping the ISO rating. So if the mutual aid agreement partnership, if their rating changed, so Waynesville's changed or Crusoe's changed, would that impact the ISO rating? Would they split your district? And would it impact these folks that are going to be brought into this?
No, it wouldn't.
So once you get it, you're.
Once you, once the district is there without a change in, by the commissioners, uh, that probably, that wouldn't change. The insurance district, uh, and the tax district would have to be changed by the commissioners. The, uh.
Waynesville suddenly became, and this is unlikely, but if Waynesville suddenly became a five.
I think they are a five, five or four now.
So if they became a higher rating.
Yeah.
Would that impact your mutual aid agreement and therefore impact these folks in that?
It wouldn't.
Okay.
They get their mu- they get their lower rating in their outside rural areas, same way we do. And we respond to them automatic aid already and they respond to us. Same thing with Crusoe. So it would, it would stay the same unless we cho- unless it was chosen to change it.
Yeah, Johnny, thank you for, uh, bringing this up and bringing it to our attention. I guess a couple of questions I have. If, once you get this reduced rating, uh, you can go immediately to your insurance company, I assume, to get that reduced insurance rating, is that correct?
Yes. As soon as, as soon as it is an, is official and they'll send, they'll usually send a letter, I think. I know when we lowered our rating, they sent out a letter to us saying it would be official this date. And they, they're supposed to notify the insurance aid companies, uh, at that point. Want to understand with this one, they may not notify us. It just may automatically go in, uh, once the district lines have changed. So.
So you won't, you won't, nobody will reach out and tell these folks they, they need to go to the insurance companies themselves to be sure they get this reduced rating?
We will.
You will?
We'll make sure that, uh, once we know it's effective, that those people know that. And we did when our insurance rate reduced initially from a nine to seven and then to a five, uh, that, uh, get with your insurance company. And, um, because it should, you should be get, if you ain't, if you're not already getting a reduction, you should be.
Okay.
And, uh, those, I, when that happened, those, the ones that, some, some of them more than a year out before their insurance company caught up with it, most of the insurance companies re- reimbursed them that expense, that they had it paid, overpaid, uh, for that period of time.
Good news. Also, if you do get a satellite, uh, building at some point, will that help to reduce it even more? What, what's the next steps to get it below a five? I know that's tough.
That, those, that will help, uh, lower the rating below a five, uh, by having those stations and having them closer to what, the way the ratings bureau looks at it is they want a fire station, an engine, fire engine stationed within a mile and a half of every resin or every building in, in the fire district. In a city that's economically justifiable, in rural areas, a lot of times it's that mile and a half. You gotta look at your properties, uh, the number of properties and what you're going to be protecting versus the cost of that str- building that station, putting a fire engine in it, uh, and things like that, so. But it, it will, if we do build those, it will help lower it. But what we're looking at now at a class five, anything less than that, most residential properties will not see a reduction in rates if it is as miniscule. It's commercial that sees the reduction. And majority of our district's residential anyway, except for a little bit in the Bethel area. There's, there's a few, few bit, uh, commercial, uh, properties. The ones that would see, it's classified as commercial would be your churches, uh, in those smaller areas. If it went below a five, they would, those, the people in those churches would see a reduction in their churches' insurance. But, uh, the houses would not see much of a reduction, if any.
I guess your, your board's in agreement with all this as well, or you probably wouldn't be here today.
Yeah, yeah. We've, our board has talked about it, uh, multiple times over the last six months before I ever approached you guys about it.
And then I agree with Commissioner Long, you know, it's probably good to get this out in front of the public and let them weigh in on it. But, uh, I know we're working on that, so thank you.
Johnny, thanks for coming this morning.
You're welcome.
Our next item is, uh, the budget review discussion with our county manager. I know he's got us some great news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is really early on for the budget presentation. Uh, we actually wrapped up, uh, departmental budget reviews last week. So now is, uh, the next sixty days is going to be trying to, uh, to put it all together and, and get something to you, uh, with a timeline that, uh, we'll get to in just a little bit. Just a quick review of some things that should, uh, get you up to speed. You saw this a few, few months ago with the, uh, uh, the audit presentation that, uh, we, uh, actually used about three point eight million dollars in fund balance last year. Largely that was a result of moving both the earmarks in sales tax for the college and the school system into their separate funds. Think that at one time in our fund balance calculation, uh, you can see, uh, the, uh, the decrease is sort of, uh, calculated in the available fund balance, but it was really not our funds because those are restricted, uh, for both the schools and, and the college. So I think this is a more accurate depiction of where we are financially. And our, uh, unsigned fund balance, it's a complicated word for, for basically the cash that we have free and clear, is at seventeen point three seven, uh, percent as of six thirty. As I go through this, please, uh, stop if you have any questions. You've seen this slide several times before. Uh, I, we don't have any new information. I think somebody from Davenport a few meetings ago said we, we currently don't have a rating because we haven't been to the bond market in so long. But the last time that we did receive anything was in, uh, twenty eighteen from Moody's. And, uh, we were considered double A three, uh, very high quality, low credit risk. This is important to revisit in, uh, uh, this meeting in particular because we're starting the, uh, the, uh, the, the financing of, of, of the jail. And I think, uh, you'll see the Truist rate reflected, uh, because of our credit rating. This is our current, uh, debt payments. You've seen this before. We are very healthy. It's within any state guidelines as far as, uh, debt. What, when you, uh, back out the, uh, the, the, it, the non-education debt, meaning that actually has both the schools and the college debt in there. Uh, this is when you just pull it out and it's strictly the county's, uh, debt. You can see it's, uh, these are our yearly debt payments. The, the profile's very healthy. When we, uh, talk about, uh, establishing the, the jail, this is the profile based on the, the most up-to-date, uh, figures from Truist. So before we've shown projections of what jail debt looked like, this is actually, uh, the, the numbers based on that three point seven two percent interest rate for twenty years that, uh, Truist extended. That's good through April twentieth, I believe. General fund expenditures, this shows, uh, current year, uh, we're ninety-six point nine million in the general fund. So, you know, uh, close to a hundred million dollars, uh, a year in our general fund. Property taxes are largest revenue source. Gear to date, uh, we've brought in about forty-seven point four million of the fifty-two point two, um, million. I'm glad, uh, Mr. Cofrin's here. Uh, last year, our collection rate, uh, through February was ninety-four point six six percent. And that was one of the highest rates ever, uh, through February of twenty-three. Our collection rate is ninety-four point seven five percent, slightly ahead of last year's. But I think that speaks volume of, of his work and, and the staff. So, uh, our, uh, we're, we're not too concerned about our, uh, current year property taxes. They're, they're trending in, in a, in a great manner. I will say for next year, we've worked with Judy to get the, uh, evaluations established. It's, it's early on, but it looks like, uh, our total tax base is going to increase about a hundred million dollars, uh, which is a lot of money. And till you take a hundred million divided by one hundred and multiply it by the tax rate, we're basically looking at about a, an increase in property tax of a million seventy thousand dollars. Not, uh, not as much as we would like to see, but, uh, we'll continue to refine those estimates as we move on. Any questions on property tax?
I, I was just wondering, is, when you were showing the debts, the percentage, I guess the percentage, what is one percent equal to in our fund balance? So is that like a, one percent is like a million dollars, you think? Yeah, back that on up a little bit. Keep going. One more. There you go.
Okay.
So when you say thirty-seven point oh-one percent.
What, what's it in?
What is one percent?
Let, let me get that. I, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, and I don't want to give a false answer.
Throw him a curve ball, Mr. Chairman.
I see Christian up there. She's calculating away.
Roughly, very roughly, we're about forty million in fund balance at the end of last fiscal year. One percent of that would be one hundred thousand.
I did catch you say that Truist had pretty much guaranteed that three point seven percent through April twentieth.
Correct.
So we're locked in until April twentieth to make a decision and.
We have until April twentieth to, to close the loan.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, sir. It, uh, we, we've, we've got some more, uh, benchmarks to hit before then, uh, so.
So with the rumblings with the Federal Reserve, I'd say we were very wise to, to be in that position.
It, when, when that, that bid was brought to you, uh, the, the Federal Reserve raised rates later that week. And then I think they signaled that they may raise again. So, uh, in my estimation, it was a, it was a really good offer when we approved it, but it's much better now.
So the debt service, if you'd slide the presentation forward to the debt service? Those, those are good trends. The blue line, you know, through twenty twenty-seven. There's some very positive things coming up on the scales.
Yes, sir. Very positive.
I mean, I know there'll be some naysayers and negativity. There always is, but the, the facts speak for themselves. There's, there's, it's a good position here.
Well, uh, you, you know, the, these are based on twenty-one and a half million dollars in, in construction. And that's, that's a big number. It's a big project. I mean, thirty-three thousand square feet of concrete and steel. It, it, it doesn't come without a lot of thought. I think the, this board's been talking about it for, for two years. Uh, and so, uh, there's, there's always people that, that, that want to second guess. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have the same number of beds we had available when the jail was built. The classification system limits from an operational standpoint how many we can house. And, and then, uh, we're holding some sentence misdemeanances. So many things have changed since the current jail was, was built. And, and we have, by statute, we're required to, to provide for housing for the inmates.
Two things on that topic moving forward. The, the board, you know, showed a lot of wisdom in choosing the architect just by the design of the roof. I know from my background, roof maintenance can be astronomical. And over the life of that building, just because there's no openings in it, there's no air conditioning units setting up there, there's no vent pipes like the other design was, uh, just in choosing that design probably saved taxpayers over the course of twenty, thirty years, I'm going to say a million dollars, maybe, maybe more. And then the plumbing takeouts, you know, I'm just, I'm just refrying some beans because there was very few people came to the public area. There was very few people came to the architectural, uh, presentation. It was disappointing. And then a lot of people start rumors and if you don't, you know, if you don't tell your story, people make up some. And so it was very important that we, we saw those presentations and, and the, uh, the actual design was superior to the other one and financially and, and the way it was laid out. And, and there's been a lot said about, uh, direct supervision, uh, which is an antiquated way of doing jails, we found out. Adding seventeen more people onto the payroll to do a direct supervision jail, when you pay their salary benefits, liability insurance and all those other things, perpetual expense. Just the design we chose and the roof layout that the architect came up with, it could be millions, millions of dollars just by making those choices that we say.
We, we, we took a, a field trip and visited two jail designs by Mosley. And, uh, one of the, the, besides the design and how you staff it for, for supervision, how you lay out the, the, uh, the utility chases, uh, and, you know, they, they're really experts at that to design it so efficiently where the, the facilities and maintenance folks can get in and, and fix what they need without going into the cells. And then, um, i- if you have a jail and the shower design is so critical, if you think about the number of showers taken per day in, in a detention center. Uh, and so we, we spent a lot of time talking about that because the repairs are very costly. It's downtime. And so, you know, through our due diligence on, on, on not just selecting the architect, but visiting to make sure that we don't miss anything, it's, it's going to be expensive to operate. make sure that we don't miss anything, it's going to be expensive to operate the jail. There's no way around that, but I think we've tried to minimize the operating costs.
You know, Commissioner Long, you're correct in what you said. You know, at first, we were criticized because they said we were taking too long, and then we were criticized saying it was a fly-by-night, and we hadn't thought it through, and so you criticize on both sides, but it is something that we've all took a lot of time and put a lot of effort in to try to make sure we got it right, and I believe we got the right people to do that. The direct supervision is going to cost us a whole lot more money. You know, I kind of knew that at our last meeting, but I wanted to double-check all of our numbers to make sure. But, you know, it's something that we took a lot of time on, and I think we're getting there right, so I think that's important.
Yeah, and I, just two comments. I just want to brag on our past commission boards, because we didn't get this, we didn't get this graph that we're looking at today, or yesterday, or two or three years ago. This is from commissions from, you know, I want to thank my fellow commissioners from ten years ago, or twelve years ago, that put us on this path, that their debt is coming down, and it has been coming down rapidly. And it'll, you know, you can see right here, you know, we're in great shape as a county on our debt, so I just wanted to mention that. And then, and y'all were talking about direct supervision. I was talking to a prison guard from the North Carolina prisons, he's a friend of mine, and he was telling me, I was asking him, I said, "What do you think of direct supervision?" And he said, "No way." He said, "You put us in..." And he gave me an example, and this is the day we live in. We had, he said they had a, he works at Craggy, and he said they had a riot there one day. They had two officers, or three officers, that was in, that were in that population of inmates, and they were in the riot. And those officers were basically, you know, pushed around, and they were trying to get out to, you know, for their own safety, if you will. And fortunately, they were able to get out, and they, with just minor injuries. But then, they were put on suspension for six months because of what happened, like, you know, to check, to make sure they didn't do anything wrong, and they were just trying to protect themselves and get out. So I don't think we want officers in with any population, or if they are, they need to be in as little as possible. And that's kind of what he told me, because we're in a day today where wrong seems right, and right seems wrong, especially in law enforcement. You know, they get into impossible situations, and then, you know, just by protecting themselves, somehow they're wrong, and they end up, you know, being charged criminally, if you will. So I think the less direct, we, well, let me just say, we shouldn't have people in with the inmates, and that's what direct supervision does, and you don't need to be in there with them, you need to be outside as much as possible, and I think probably all law enforcement would agree with that, so...
Yeah, Commissioner.
Because they're not there for, they're there for a good reason. Go ahead.
No, what you just said, I was just going to back you up on, you know, our past sheriff and chief deputy, we're definitely in agreement with the plan. I know that our new sheriff and our chief deputy who's here today, I spoke with him, and they're in agreement with what we're doing as well, so, I mean, that speaks volumes. You know, both our sheriffs, past and present, agree with what we're doing, and like you said, most law enforcement would agree with that. So again, I think we're doing the right thing.
Also, I know all these discussions are relevant, and that's the reason why these decisions were made, but you have to consider also, which we're going to do what we have to do, but you have to consider also the job market situation. The workforce shortage, it's real, and everywhere I go, everybody I talk to, it's, let's face it, I mean, there's fourteen counties, we're the fourteenth county in the state as far as the highest age of our population, sixty-five years old and older. There's eighty-six counties younger than we are. Sixty-five-year-olds are not going to contribute to the workforce, and so our workforce situation in Haywood County is real. And so those things you have to put on the scales as well, but that wouldn't have factored in. Those, we did what, you know, those other things justified it, but as a sidebar, you know, you have to consider that.
I think it's one of the factors into the decision. According to Todd Davis with Mosley, who was a jail administrator for Alamance County for many years, direct supervision increases your staffing by thirty-five percent. So if you're short now, and you had to go to direct supervision, you would be down thirty-five percent. So I think, besides cost, just availability of the workforce is something that you have to think about.
I would like to weigh in on something. We should have mentioned this at the last meeting, but, you know, we all are making decisions financially about the jail, but our new sheriff is the one that his, he and his team have to operate the facility. On February the first, he wrote a letter to all of us, we were copied on it, and the third paragraph of that letter says, "In addition," this is coming from Sheriff Wilkie, "I have reviewed the plans and potential alternatives to the current design as it relates to direct supervision of detainees. I am satisfied that the current proposal offers the safest and most efficient means to protect our detainees and employees based on the best practices and standard model for detention centers like ours." He goes on to say that, you know, we're not, because I've heard this too, that we're building a Taj Mahal jail, you know, and he goes on to say that he wants to make it very clear that it's not intended to be a comfortable place, one that is admittedly designed to be a deterrent for criminal behavior. It is safe, and it is clean, and he talks about the importance of having a jail and how it really does ultimately save lives. So I think that we were remiss in maybe not quoting some of his thoughts because he and his staff is actually going to be the ones that run it. So I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to read you his words, not speak on his behalf, but...
Okay.
Didn't mean to hijack your presentation and go into a jail, but I think there's a lot of people that needed to hear that.
Well, it's a major consideration of the whole budget discussion, so it wasn't hijacked at all. It's probably the largest, or, you'll see, it's at the top, anyway. This is current year sales tax, and this shows the two years prior to current year. The current year is in that gray bar, and you can see July, August, September, and we were actually outpacing the last two years, and that last two years has been just amazing, almost a rocket ship for sales tax. And then you see November actually was right in line with last year, and we have a ninety-day lag in sales tax, so that's why I don't have something more up-to-date with you. So generally, very positive, but I hope that trend where current year doesn't look like last year, and we'll see as more revenue comes in. But based on the trend year-to-date, through these collections, we're expecting about a million more dollars in sales tax.
How are we looking, so have you gotten projections for next year's sales tax from the state or guidance on that?
The North Carolina League of Municipalities actually provides that, and we've looked at it, and they're saying three to four percent.
Okay, so they are seeing it positive.
We do a little bit better based on tourism and lots of things that already been discussed today, so we'll use theirs as a benchmark, but we're also going to use our own data to make a projection we think's reasonable.
Okay, okay, very good.
Really, the budget drivers for this year, as I see it, and I think we've talked, and we're meeting with the schools, about a new funding formula. The schools are sort of at a, in a tough spot, based on enrollment down and then associated reductions from the state. So we're in conversations with them about the new funding formula. We also know that the college is probably going to request somewhere in that three to five percent range. Health insurance for the county is going up about six hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's a big number, but we have so many insured lives that that's driving it. The state retirement system, every year, the state reports to us the employer contribution, so that's an increase, again, this year. Overall, that's going to be about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's uncontrollable. Employee compensation, I've got another slide, we'll talk about that. Fleet maintenance, we have so many vehicles every year, just the number of vehicles that we need to replace is significant cost. And then we have almost seven hundred thousand square feet of building space, and I know this year, we increased funding for maintenance, and we've bought several HVAC systems that just continue to go up, repairing asphalt, all sorts of things are driving our costs there. We'll say...
Is that a typo on the vehicles? Was there supposed to be a one in front of ninety-five?
It's one ninety-five, yes, sir.
Double-check.
So, for instance, let's talk about employee compensation. January twenty-two through January twenty-three, the CPI was six point four percent. Cost of one percent COLA is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So if we were going to adjust for inflation, our contribution would have to be two point three six eight million dollars for next year. Current year, we did a three percent COLA, two percent merit, that's what I'm sort of targeting, is a total of five percent, and that will cost us about one point eight five million dollars for next fiscal year.
Is that slide, do you have that somewhere?
No, those are just some notes I have on there.
So the, just that employee compensation part's one point eight five?
That would be five percent. If we wanted to go to the CPI of six point four percent, then that would almost be two point four million.
And so I hear these stories about the jail fin, getting back on the jail financing, I get these folks say, "Well, we've got all these apartments coming in." I've heard this more than once. We've, I've talked to you about it, probably six months ago, trying to transfer some of those new properties that were going to have a windfall toward the jail. But as you see, those properties are not going to even keep up with our employee compensation.
He just said it was a million seventy thousand, one million seventy thousand dollars.
A million seventy thousand is not even going to cover our employee compensation. So again, you know, to the critics, you know, that, they're not seeing the whole picture. If they were here today, they'd see the whole picture.
Right, yeah. It's a tough spot. So property tax is going to be just a little over a million, sales tax is a million. Now, the one, those are our two major revenues. Now, this year, we do have more interest on investments. The last few years has just been really low because the interest rates are so low, so we're actually making more on our investments. So we hope to have a half million more there, so let's just say it's two and a half million dollars. You can see one point eight five million to do five percent COLA, that six hundred and ten thousand for the health insurance, and then four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the state retirement increases. See, two and a half million dollars is a lot of money, but you can see that it doesn't go very far just to pay for what you have. Just to keep pace is really tough.
It's called inflation.
It is, and that doesn't include any discussion of increases to the rate from, for heat lights and water, and all of those other things that, and fuel, all of those other things that we have to compensate. These are the big-ticket items I'm trying to review with you. Personnel requests, last year, we had twenty-six, this year, we've had twenty-eight, and you can see the departments where they come from. If we were to fund all twenty-eight positions, it's right at one point nine million for next fiscal year.
Vacancies, do we have?
Currently, I'll have to get you that number, I'm not sure. I would not be surprised if it wasn't, no, you know, fifteen, twenty, something like that.
I'd like to see a comparison of where our vacancies are in comparison to where the requests are.
Okay. Vehicles, this, these would be the replacement of vehicles. There's twenty-six with an estimated total cost of two point three million. It's not too far out of line with last year's. Keep in mind, this does include some of the equipment outfit, mostly our public safety. So when you buy a Dodge Durango or a Charger, you often get really close to the purchase price, and the lights, the sirens, the computers, all of those, the cages, those kinds of things. So about two point three million in vehicle replacement for next year. And then outline years, as you think about making decisions, of course, we've got the debt for the jail. Once it's constructed and we move in, then we're going to have some operating increases associated with that. Increased cost for employees, that's not going away. We finally got to market, and we've not really lost that many employees for just pay, and the last thing we want to do is give that ground back, because it took a lot of heavy lifting from the board to get us to market, and if we don't stay there, then we start losing employees and we can't deliver the services. Speaking of services, as we grow, there's just an increased demand for services. Travis is here. I think we're looking at almost eleven percent over last year. You know, a few years ago, we had Medic Seven, that was a part-time unit. We funded to turn it into a full-time Medic Seven. We added Medic Eight as the convalescent vehicle, but we staffed it with paramedics, and that was a great move because we've had to run non-convalescent calls with it just to keep up. And Travis has requested Medic Nine, and I'm not sure that we aren't really close to needing that. The call volume just keeps growing and growing, and a lot of it's based on the demographics of who lives here and who's moving here. Then the library renovation construction, just to bring that back, that's one of the main projects that hasn't been completed, but I do want to keep it on the radar screen. And then maintenance for existing facilities, just what we have, we have to keep in good shape, so. Any questions on those? Just some dates for you. We'll probably have the college and the school system here on the seventeenth for a work session to talk about their budget needs and what they will conquer in FY twenty-four. We'll have a work session, basically, on the entire budget on May first, hope to present the budget at the May fifteenth meeting. Then Tuesday after Memorial Day, we'll have the public hearing on the budget, and hopefully we will adopt on June fifth. If not, we have fallback date, two weeks from that date. So now, that's basically a really quick overview. If you have questions or things that you would like to see me include in the budget, I'd love to hear from you.
Go back to that timeline, please. Work sessions be prior to the evening meeting?
We'll see how the agenda looks. If we need to meet earlier, we'll know ahead of time and notice it, but it might be that we can just do it as part of the regular scheduled meeting.
You'll be scheduling times for us to come in individually?
Yes, sir. I've built a lot of time into this, here it is, early March, and we've already finished. I think this is going to be a tough budget. Revenue's coming in decently strong, but our expenditure side is really what is driving it, and it's going to be tough, it really is.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to the agenda. I do not have anything. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners have any questions about the five budget amendments, or meaning the five items on the consent agenda?
Just one comment about the last meeting minutes. I know our chief deputy's here, and he made a presentation where we had to increase from our fund balance a considerable amount of money for funding for our, I think, juvenile healthcare in our jail, and one of the key comments was, you know, the state changed the rules and kicked some of that back. It's in our consent agenda, the meeting from last minute, meeting. And so again, you know, we are continually faced as commissioners, I'm using that as an example, to where the state continues to kick back things to the local county taxpayer, and, you know, I know they've got a good fund balance in Raleigh, but it's not by accident. Somebody has to pay for these things. And this is one example of others that I've experienced since I've been sitting on this board. Just want to make mention of that. I didn't mention it at the last meeting, but I wanted to. I didn't mention it at the last meeting, but I wanted to today. I reviewed the minutes from last meeting this morning early and saw that. And just something that folks need to know. We get a lot of stuff kicked back to us that, you know, we didn't plan on it, just got dropped in our lap. One stroke of the pen in Raleigh makes a big difference for us.
Yeah, that's right.
Unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandates.
That's right.
I would like to draw attention to item number five on the consent agenda. That is, you know, we all received, all the counties received money under the American Rescue Plan Act, and they're very, our funds, and they're very specific in how the funding can be spent. And, you know, our sheriff's office, you know, I believe in all of our public safety folks, and I'm bragging on them often, but I'm glad that we're going to be able to outfit the sheriff's office with a new vest. And those folks are out there for us every day, and that's an important thing to keep them safe. So it's good to see those expenditures really get some boots on the ground, so to speak. So that's good.
That's right.
Appreciate what y'all do.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item is the, is a request of approval for, of resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, authorizing the negotiation of an installment financing contract and providing for certain other related matters here, too. Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is simply the first requirement by the LGC. We have to file the LGC application for the debt tomorrow, and they like to have something from the Board of Commissioners. This is actually non-binding, but before they will accept the application and move forward with their process, they want some confirmation that the Board of Commissioners is actually aware of the project and supports it. So the resolution before you is simply that, and like I said, it is non-binding.
Can you say this was an LGC requirement?
It is, yes, sir.
And that's another thing, there are a lot of layers that we have to go through to get financing for a project like this. So this is one of the pieces of the puzzle. So I don't see how y'all keep up with all this.
And those layers are built-in protection, by the way.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so is any, anybody, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one.
I'd like to motion to approve item one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Number two is to request approval of a resolution by the County of Haywood, authorizing execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement for additional funds between the State of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. This is the second wave, and our county attorney, Frank Queen, is going to fill us in on that.
You'll recall that last year, we had a, Haywood County joined with 1,000 other local governments and tribes to sue the opioid manufacturers. And we received a settlement of that lawsuit after a couple of years of litigation that amounted to about, in North Carolina, amounted about $750 million that came into North Carolina local jurisdictions as settlement funds, spread out over several years, some cases many years, 10 years, to fund some of the effects, to counteract some of the effects of opioid over prescription in the county. This is a second wave of litigation that has been settled, and it involves essentially or largely the pharmacies that were delivering, in many cases, millions of doses of opioids in excess of the, of the legal needs for those prescriptions. And so the litigation established a liability of Walmart, CVS, CVS Pharmacy, Walgreens, and then some generic drug manufacturers, Teva, Allergan, and some others. And in any case, this second wave of litigation is about $600 million coming into North Carolina. And the resolution is pretty close to a match of the earlier resolution, and it authorizes the county manager and the county attorney to sign the settlement documents and start the funds flowing in. Just as a sidelight, in the first wave of litigation, we had a 100% joiner in that settlement by every local government in North Carolina. As a result of that, of that 100% participation, we got an additional bonus out of the, out of the, out of the settlement funds. And we're shooting across North Carolina, we're shooting for that same 100% participation in the, in this, in the second wave funds. And that will probably also achieve a little bit of a bonus. The bonus comes from those states that didn't get 100% participation by their local government units in the settlement. And so it gets redistributed to the outfits that do 100%. We did, and we expect to do so again. The funds will not be, the funds, there'll be a substantial initial payment, then the funds come in over years in the future. The board has already made some plans for the first wave's expenditure, but the second wave will again help offset some of those costs that have been affecting the residents of Haywood County for many years now.
Do we know what the amount is that we'll be getting?
They've got a, they've got a, I'm sorry, I should have punched this up. They have a little, they have a little website that you can plug in your county and it'll tell you what the number is, but I frankly didn't get it.
Actually, I was in a meeting, meeting on that, and the second wave is 600 million dollars.
Well, that's for the state.
That's for the, that's for the whole state. And I will say that the counties, North Carolina has done really well. The counties actually get 85% of the total money. And so our portion's really good. And that was, that was CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart.
Right.
That this second wave entails, so.
Well, those are the pharmacies. We also have some, we also have some generic manufacturers that are also in on the deal. But this will probably, this isn't the final step of all the litigation that's involved in this. There may be some yet to come, but the big, the big dollar amounts probably have been accounted for with the first and this second wave coming through.
And then, Brian, once we get the settlement, what do you think, what are our plans for that?
Basically, I guess it will follow the way the first settlement funds did. There's option A and option B. And so we were asked to sort of set on our funds and work with the Southwest Commission. They've issued an RFP to look at if there's some way we can work regionally with all the counties of Western North Carolina to create more bed space in some fashion. There's just not a lot of treatment facilities, not enough beds for the need, so Russ.
Be for mental health.
Right, mental health and treatment. And so Russ has issued an RFP to see if there's a way to work with folks. Right now, the first tranche of funding is front-loaded, but after about the first five or six years, it drops off to it's, it's only about $180,000 a year. It's really tough to run a program that's allowable with that, while 5.2 million dollars is a lot of money, it's stretched out over 18 years. And so it's really tough to set up something. So we're looking at a way to work with the counties west of us to fix the problem.
Option B, option B does entail, and I think the recommendation is, if it's at all possible, it reads that one or more strategies from a longer list of strategies after engaging in a collaborative strategic process of planning with diverse local stakeholders, which is basically trying to collaborate with, with our neighbors, neighboring counties to possibly do something in a joint effort. But of course, that'll be later down the road.
Correct. And we brought in Dogwood Health Trust into that conversation in those meetings because they support, they see the need and how complicated it is. So hopefully, we can get a project rolling that will have an impact.
Good to partner with them, that's good.
They not look into putting a place in Franklin? Was it, wasn't that part of it? Looked at, they, I believe they checked with what, Angel Hospital, it didn't work, so then now they're looking for a different location or something?
That's my understanding, that was, that was an initial project, and I think they found a different use for that hospital, but they haven't given up that approach yet.
We have till April 18th to have these documents signed and turned in, correct? I believe that's the deadline.
That's the deadline, yes.
So we're going to get that rolling today.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two of the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is to request approval of a budget amendment, Public School Debt Service Capital Fund, 743, I'm sorry, $744,363 to appropriate fund balance restricted to school, public school capital and debt service expenditures in order to assist the school system in paying for FEMA reimbursable capital expenditures while they are waiting actual FEMA reimbursement. Funds will be reimbursed to this county's managed school fund once FEMA reimbursements are received by the school system. Funds were originally budgeted in fiscal year 2022, but were not fully expended.
Yeah, that's a mouthful.
That is a mouthful. I thought I was reading an epistle.
Yes, and FY '22, we appropriated $900,000 to help the schools, basically with cash flow on there until they get reimbursement from FEMA. They did not expend all those funds, about 150,000-ish they spent last year. So they have requested that we reallocate those funds so that they can keep paying their invoices for flood-related items while they're waiting on FEMA reimbursement. I spoke with their CFO, and as of January, they have submitted about 1.6 million in reimbursement requests, but they have not received those yet. I asked her if she had any indication of a timeframe, and she said several months. Unfortunately, they're not moving as quickly on the schools project as they did for the county.
You have any question for Christian? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll go to item four that you'll be here for, Christian. Request approval of a budget amendment for public safety EMS, $132,000 to appropriate fund balance to cover oxygen and disposable medical supplies protected by the remainder, projected for the remainder of the fiscal year. Additional funds needed for rising cost of medical supplies and extended wait times for emergency room visits along with increased volume, call volume. Go ahead, Christian.
Yes, this should cover these two lines, which is oxygen and disposable medical supplies we project through the end of the fiscal year.
Calls up related maybe to convalescent transport?
I would have to defer that to Travis. He indicated it was mostly related to the rising cost of the supplies and also extended wait times for emergency room waits. More oxygen for the patients while they're waiting to get in and be seen.
Travis, is that getting any better, wait times?
It's improved in the past four, five years.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item four. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item five. Request approval of a budget amendment for E911 Fund, $184,000 to appropriate fund balance of the E911 Fund to cover PSAP eligible expenditures to upgrade the backup 911 center. So what is PSAP? Do we know?
Oh goodness, I cannot remember the acronym. We call it, they're, they're the board that funds and allows the 911 fund to operate. Shanda would be our greatest.
No, it's the Public Safety Answering P, it's the PSAP. It's just what they call a 911 communication center. It's what the.
Just one of those acronyms we use and we forget all those long words in between, don't we? Okay, okay.
And it's just the fund that the 911 board regulates. They set the rules and the regulations for that fund, and it's based off of the surcharge off your 911 phone bills.
Okay, that's what all those fees are on your cell phone bill when you get, you scratch your head about. They probably don't have what P, whatever that is.
PSAP.
PSAP, okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that?
Just to comment, I mean, we have an award-winning 911 call answer center.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item five.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Christian. You've got one more.
One more.
This was, number six is the request approval of a budget amendment for HHSA programs, that's Health and Human Services Administration, I guess, or agency. This is for $489,147 to appropriate fund balance for the actual revenue carryover from fiscal year '21, '22 to fiscal year '22, '23, and adjust the expenses accordingly to match. Revenue that rolls forward into the next fiscal year is projected in January, then adjustments are needed to reconcile accounts to the actual funds received and expended. This revenue represents fund, represents fund received and unspent in fiscal year 2022. Sorry, Christian.
All my budget amendments are very wordy, sorry. Try to explain it. So we received these funds, this revenue, last year. It is primarily for child support. We did not expend most of those funds, so what we're carrying over is the revenue to this year, so we can increase those expenditures and use those funds. We have to do this every year. It has to do with the calculations they do in January to bring it to actual. So this is just, this is a normal cycle of the revenue for HHSA.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item six.
I'll make a motion. We approve item six.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under appointments. That concludes our regular agenda, so we go into appointments. And the first one is to request approval of William T. Nolan to a three-year term on the engineering review board in the role of engineer, and approval to waive the two-term policy and reappoint Randy Best to a third three-year term on the engineering review board in the role of established land disturber. Brian, I guess it's pretty self-explanatory, but go ahead.
It is. Mr. Nolan applied and was vetted and recommended by the engineering review board. Despite multiple postings, vacancies, no other applications were received, and Mr. Best has, is willing to serve a term if we will waive our term limit. And everyone thinks this is in the best interest because his departure would be detrimental to the function of the board.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of appointments.
Second.
Terry makes a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay. Number two is the request approval appointment of Barbie Champion to a three-year term on the Clyde Board of Zoning Adjustment as a representative of the extraterritorial jurisdictions, or ETJ.
Just an aside, this vacancy has been posted for over a year, so the Town Board of Clyde Alderman was really happy for an applicant. They met on February 9th and voted to recommend Ms. Champion to serve the initial three-year term.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item two.
I'll make a motion to approve item two.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And number three is to request appointment, reappointment of Bob Clark and Todd Murdock to a second three-year terms on the Recreation Advisory Board. Brandon, you're on that board, so.
Yeah, Bob and Todd both have served the board well, and this is a recommendation from the board.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll entertain, you want to make that motion?
Yep, I will, saying that, I will make the motion that we receive this reappointment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is for item three of appointments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, that concludes our agenda. We do not have a closed session. Does anyone have anything else to add?
I'd like to thank folks that are willing to serve on those boards. It's hard to find people sometimes to step up. Great, I appreciate them all coming back.
True. And these are all volunteer boards, so it's not like they get paid. Okay, and I, well, anyway. I think the soil and water is all volunteer, isn't it?
No, some of the advisors are elected. Maybe two.
But they're not paid, are they? Are they paid? Okay, so it's volunteer in a way. Well, yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're elected or appointed and not paid.
So, yeah, okay. But we appreciate everybody that does, serves on our boards. Makes Haywood County a great county. Okay, so anything else? I'll entertain a motion. We, go ahead.
I've got one thing. Folks are listening, or if you didn't get a notice in the mail, now I understand there's going to be a public hearing here this afternoon. Duke Energy's rate increase, 17.7%. Did anybody get that notice? Oh, you're pointing over there. It's over in the, you must have got that notice, too, because it caught my attention. 17.7% projected rate increase, and the public hearing is in the courthouse. Is that, is it, which courtroom is it in? Do you remember? They can probably show you. It's this evening, folks got a notice in the mail. That will be happening today.
Do you have Duke Power?
Absolutely.
You don't have HMs? Really, Duke goes the way out to Bethel. Okay. Right. Well, thanks for that info there, Tom. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.